That's what you expect. Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started, we're a little, few minutes late. And, uh, good, okay, we're up. We're gonna start the June 3rd regular city council meeting. It's a little after 6 o'clock, we had a meeting before, we all had a break, and so let's get started. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran, here. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Here.
Councilmember Haquez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Meisner?
Uh, here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here. Well, let's all rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to talk to City Council, we have some forms back there, we'd like you to go ahead and fill it out, bring it up to our city clerk, and then when that time in the meeting comes, I'll call your name and you can address City Council. Don't rush up all at one time. Are there any announcements from City Council? Ms. Cochran?
So, I spent the morning stenciling some murals on the concrete pylons down at the parking lot for the train and Duck Park, and tomorrow's when they start doing the painting. They're doing painting tomorrow through the 10th and then the, or excuse me, tomorrow through the 7th and then the 10th through the 14th, and they need volunteers. So, if you're looking for something fun to do with your kids, go down there, do some painting, go by the splash pad. All the supplies are provided, the murals will be stenciled up on the wall and you guys get to just paint, and they're needing some help doing that, so if you've got some... Yeah, tomorrow it starts, so if you've got free time this week, head on down there and help them paint.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran.
What are the times that they're out there?
And that's at the park, where, did you say again?
Yeah, it's in the parking lot of Duck Park and the train, and there, there's the little overpass that they're doing the painting on, so.
Oh.
And it's, those are the murals that we had submitted by all of our kids here in Canyon City, and pretty neat looking.
Good. Did you have something, Mr. Meisner?
I do, but I can't...
You had perplexed...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anyone else?
Um, Mr. Mayor, we just wanna, I just wanna announce the general government meeting this Wednesday at 4:00.
And what are we doing, general government, we're...
General government.
General government meeting.
Well, um, the homeless coalition is coming, and they're gonna give a short presentation on their point and count that they did about the, the status quo for homeless population in Fremont County, and then it looks like we're also talking about, I think it was like Title 16.
Title 16.
That homeless is the...
The homeless count is the winner count?
Yeah, and that's, and you can ask questions of Didi, but that's what's required from national, which is really, I think our summer population is different. But have your questions ready and prepared for them.
Okay, Ms. Turner?
Um, I also wanted to talk about the Valleywide is going to do an open house next week on Tuesday evening. Um, I have it written down as 6:00 to 7:30, so for those that wanna come and see the building and see how that's been redeveloped, I think that everyone's invited.
That's a beautiful addition there downtown. Wow, Mr. ...
Sure, yes, and we do have morning line this Wednesday.
Who's gonna go? Morning line, 8:30?
Morning.
Okay, I'll be there.
I can go.
Good. And we have our county mayor's meeting in Rockvale. Rockvale distinguishes themselves because they make cinnamon buns for the mayors. I, I've yet to see that in Canyon City, but they have a great meal, so. Okay, anything else? Let's move on, I have a proclamation for Bike Week and Bike to Work Day. Is anyone here representing that group? So, they didn't bike in, alright. I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
June 2019 is Bike Month, and June 26th, 2019, Bike to Work Day. It's a proclamation. Whereas Colorado is a premier cycling, bicycling state, and the state of Colorado has designated each June as Bike Month to celebrate bicycling for transportation, fun, and health. And whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, and a convenient form of transportation, and is an excellent way to enjoy Canyon City's scenic beauty, and whereas the city of Canyon City is dedicated to promoting, supporting, and celebrating safe bicycling, and whereas bicycling activities and attractions have a positive impact on Canyon City's economy and tourism industry, and stimulate economic development by making the area attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the outdoors and healthy lifestyle, and whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, to boost community spirit, and to reduce pollution and congestion. Now therefore Canyon City calls upon citizens to participate in bicycling activities for improved health and community well-being, and designates June 2019 as Bike Month and June 26th, 2019, as Bike to Work Day. And who do I give this to, Cindy? Okay, thank you. I would now like to invite Chief Harvey Up forward to discuss an item, it's recognition of administrative, a proclamation is, where's the proclamation? Recognition, sorry, of Administrative Excellence, is that the one you're gonna do?
Yes, sir, it is, so, um, you know, I've definitely got some good folks that helped me with the organization, and whenever possible, especially when they do something that's truly remarkable, like this next young lady I'm about to call up, I definitely wanna make sure that you guys all know what good work is happening at the Canyon City Police Department, and so I'd like to call up Ms. Jill Filer, please. So, this is kinda tied to the, our compatriots here from Pueblo County Sheriff's Office, but there's a little bit more to it as far as what she's actually done, so we've had several things within the organization that we've needed to find some creative ways to get the equipment and tools that we need, and one of those was about radios. So, we have radios that were well over 20 years old, they were definitely long past their useful lifespan, and in essence, we didn't have the $300,000 it would take to buy brand-new radios. So, Ms. Filer here, using some of her regional contacts, was able to find us some, some radios that would upgrade what we currently have, it's about a $67,000 donation, and now all of our folks have new radios, but that's not the only reason why she's getting this award. And the reason why I'm giving her an Administrative Excellence Award is because that's just one big example, whether it's AED pads, or helping volunteers actually draft a grant process, and looking at our internal workings of how we submit neighbors' data to CBI and the FBI, she really has been a breath of fresh air to help us get past a lot of the hurdles and obstacles that we had faced when I first got to the department, and doing it in a creative way that is extremely frugal and uses our tax dollars as best as possible. And so for that, Administrative Excellence is one that we don't give out very often, because it really, you really need to show us how you're saving money and improving processes within the organization, and she's just really been a blessing to, to the Canyon City Police Department. So, I wanted to recognize her for Administrative Excellence, for Jill Filer, for her ingenuity in financial and administrative management and support of the Canyon City Police Department.
Should we get a picture here, or?
Yes.
Let's go up here. I think we can all squeeze down in the front.
Oh, yes. This enthusiasm. Much better than the last one we had.
Huge one.
Wish you good.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Tammy, don't throw the consternation.
Trust me.
I see that smile. Thank you.
I was standing behind her.
Thank you, thank you, good job.
Keep up the good work.
So, Mr. Meisner, we will absolutely keep tight controls on that picture, there'll be no photoshopping going on there. Yeah, so the next one is, in addition to folks doing great things within side of our organization, we also wanna recognize, and I'm sorry if I'm jumping protocol there, Mr. Mayor, but our...
No, go ahead, please go ahead.
Okay. Our next one is a regional partner, we are definitely trying to build regional relationships, and we've done that with smaller police departments as well as sheriff's offices in the southern Colorado region, and so I'd like to call Chief Mark Mears and Chief Dave Lucero from the Pueblo County Sheriff's Office up. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have all the different things that Pueblo County has helped us with, and since, you know, my not-quite-two-years, I've made several friends over there, and Chief Lucero and I, um, the first time we met is when we were doing an active shooter functional exercise at the hospital, and so, and a functional exercise is, we don't tell anybody what's happening, we tell them there's something that's coming up, but we tell them that it's an exercise, and we're not gonna tell you when or where this thing is happening, to actually test our functionality and our response to an active shooter here in Canyon City. And Chief Lucero, as well as, at the time Captain Tracy Swearingen, came over and helped give us tactical advice, they brought the mobile command post with us, over to help us manage that incident, help mentor our folks. Chief Mears invited us to come over to the CSEP exercise, which, that's part of the chemical depot, so they actually plan, so they have really helped us try and hone our skills on how we would respond to emergencies as big as, you know, a chemical spill, or I won't say a small, but different size scope as an active shooter, and so their resources, they've helped us with a number of different things, as well as the financial support that they just recently gave us for this donation of radios, and so I really wanted to thank Sheriff Kirk Taylor, as well as his command staff, for helping us and being such a great partner to the Canyon City Police Department. And so, we, we have this plaque that we'd like to present to them, it says, this is a war, award is presented to Sheriff Kirk Taylor and the men and women of the Pueblo County Sheriff's Office for their continued dedication and support to the Canyon City Police Department, presented this third day of June 2019. Thank you.
You wanna have a picture? Picture, sure, let's do that.
Get the dinner.
Get your exercise.
Just a second.
Quite a long, no, quite a long...
No, we need to open the hands.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all your help. Appreciate you.
Thanks, whatever we can do.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Thank you, Chief Harvey, appreciate it. Let's go on to the consent agenda. I'd ask the city, acting city administrator to review that consent agenda for us, please.
Alright, item A is approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on February 18th, and the special city council meetings on April 1st, May 17th, and then also the general government meetings on March 6th and April 3rd. Item B, we're actually gonna ask you to pool, we are not awarding a bid for 2419, it came in over budget. Item C is to award bid number 2519 to Avalanche Construction. Item D is award bid number 3319 to Martin Marietta. Item E is to award bid number 3418 to Avalanche Construction. Item F, award bid 4519 for the police annex furniture to K-Log, and the amount not to exceed $16,590.27. Item G, authorize the mayor to sign water services contract agreement for 3236 Grandview Avenue. Item H, authorize disposal of decommissioned police cars in accordance to the city's purchasing policy. And item I is to receive and file the list of bills.
Okay, thank you, fine. With the exception of the poll of not B, are there any additions or corrections at this time? Ms. Gonzalez?
Cindy, I'm sorry, I should have emailed you earlier, but my day got away from me. I am absent on February 18th, 2019, city council meeting, but I'm quoted as making a motion.
Mr. Meisner?
I have a question regarding minutes. I'm gonna find it. The April, the minutes where we talk about the horses up at the gorge, I'm confused, I'm gonna say about, maybe on second reading, we changed the verbiage, is that what we in fact did?
It was on second reading.
Okay, so that particular verbiage...
Yeah, I let you listen to that one.
Okay.
Okay, are you done, Mr. Meisner?
I think so.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
I was just gonna make a motion.
I...
Do you have...
We're gonna have discussion after the motion?
Yes, we are.
I'll hold.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we accept the, adopt the agenda and consent agenda with the recommended changes to the minutes, and excluding 8B.
Second?
Second, Mr. Hammerick, thank you, any discussion on that motion, Mr. Meisner?
I don't know that this is the appropriate time, but is it possible relative to the bids that, is Adam here? He's here. Can he just give us a very brief overview of that process?
Mr. Lancaster, would you care to...
The bid opening.
Do you wanna do that now, approve this motion, and then we can ask Adam to come up?
Well, it's part of the motion.
It's part of the motion, okay, please...
I mean, it's not part of the motion, but it's part of... That's, I, I, we'll see. So, my just question is, is let's, can you just very quickly give me an overview of how the process evolves with opening a bid?
Our actual bid opening process?
Right.
So, most of our sealed bids are due on the two Thursdays before the city council meeting. Usually it's a Thursday morning, 11:00, 11:00 AM is typical, unless we have some kind of adjustment that we're, some kind of deadline we're trying to chase, or something like that. Usually those are done downstairs here, they're always open to the public. Typically contractors, we always warn them to be careful with whatever couriers they use, FedEx, for example, is a bad courier, because they, we're still not a priority area for FedEx, and so even if someone sends it overnight with FedEx, it doesn't always get to us by bid opening time. So, we always caution them and those sorts of things, so sometimes they'll come by courier, sometimes they'll come in the mail, sometimes people will submit them a day ahead of time, some people will hand them to us at the bid opening itself. Sometimes they'll drop them upstairs to the cashier, and the cashier will timestamp them, give them to the finance department. Anyway, we all sit around the table, depending on how many bids there are, what types of bids, who's in the room, we'll decide which bid gets open first. Typically, if there's a lot of folks that are there for one bid, we'll take care of that one and get it out of the way. We will open all the bids, we read, we read each bid total. A lot of our bids will have line items, we, unless there's a small amount of line items, we typically won't go through each line item individually, we will give that information out later. We'll just read the total bid. If there's multiple bid schedules, we'll read the total for each bid schedule, for each contractor, and then, and then once we're done reading the bids, if we have an engineer's estimate, we usually announce the engineer's estimate at that time. We will give a, you know, an opinion on who we think is the apparent low bidder at the time, even though they still have to be evaluated, and then we usually send everybody off with a thank you, and say, we'll, we will send out bid tabs in attendance at a later date as soon as we've evaluated them, and then we usually give, if they don't know it already, if it's not in the bid documents, we'll tell them the target date for award.
Mr. Meisner?
I'm sure you're, you're potentially aware, explain the relevance and the timing of the engineer's estimate, as to when you announce that.
Sure, so, we, we as a city don't announce our engineer's estimate before bids are opened, and the reason for that is because we don't want bids that look like our estimate, because that, that's a reality. Estimates are an educated guess at best, usually depend, and very dependent on the market, dependent on past bids, especially if it's a bid that is materially not something that's very common with the city, we may not even have an estimate, but we never release those before the bid opening.
And why is that, why do, why do we choose to do...
Well, do you go to a car, this is just an example, you wouldn't go to a car dealer and say, "I have $5,000 in my pocket, what kind of car can you sell me?" He's gonna say, "Well, I got this one for $5,000 over here." That's, that's why you don't tell him that, because you don't want them bidding to your budget or your estimate, you want them to give you an honest bid that they've penciled and that they've calculated real cost on their, on their behalf.
Is there, is there controversy that you know of? I mean, what's the difference between...
The controversy I know of, that I know of currently, is, a couple weeks ago, we had a bid opening, I was not present at it, so one of my staff was there to do the bid opening with the finance department. He had an estimate in hand, no one asked for that estimate, he, he didn't give it, he didn't think to give it. Later on, when there came through an email from one of the bidders saying, "How come you guys didn't release an estimate?" Upon receiving that email, we sent the estimate out, said, "Sorry, we neglected to do that at the bid opening." And then at the last bid opening, we had the same bidder question why we don't let them know what the estimate is before we open the bids.
So, at the point that the bids are received, those numbers being sealed cannot be changed, I'm assuming?
Correct.
I, I'm not sure I, that I understand the difference between announcing the engineer estimate prior to the opening or after the opening, considering that at that point in time, nothing can be changed.
Well, and we could talk, we, we actually need to talk about this a little bit more in the future, and we talked about it a little bit a year or so ago with the design-build There are some entities that don't even release any of the numbers until they've decided to award it to somebody, and that's caused, and that's a good idea, we don't currently follow that policy, and the reason that's a good idea is because, just because we open the bids, doesn't mean we're gonna award it. Oftentimes, we might find, you know, years ago when I first started here, we had a CDOT form that was left out in a bid package, and just because that form wasn't submitted, the CDOT made us throw the bid out and rebid it the, two weeks later, and magically the low bid was that low bidder's numbers. And so, the other thing is, we had, just recently, we had a bid opening, that the one you talked about tonight that we're not awarding, were the, were the, it was over budget. So, we, we may wanna come back with a new budget, or CDOT may come back and say, "Hey, we've got additional funds, why don't you rebid it?" You don't want everybody using everybody's numbers. So, again, that disclosure isn't necessarily a good idea until we have done all the evaluating on whether it's a good idea to get those numbers out. Again, there might be something wrong with the documentation, we might find out later there was something fraudulent that happened, we may need to adjust our budget and rebid it, and again, the reason it's sealed is so it's, it's a fair process. And so, we don't wanna, we don't wanna make those numbers available that are, that really will be public, will be public information at some point, sooner than we need to, to make it a fair process.
I'm, I'm not, I don't, I don't know that I agree with that, but that's here near here there. I would suggest that, that we develop a bid process, that's an actual policy that we follow, and secondly, I would advise, suggest that, I just don't like those bids being opened back there that are never recorded. I would suggest that those bids are either moved up here, so that we can electronically and visually record those, so that we got documentation about who said what, or get that area back there visually and, and audibly recorded, so that we can minimize some of the issues about who said what. And I don't mean to question the integrity of you or your department, and I hope you understand that, but I think as we move forward, if you had a, a black-and-white policy in terms of these are the steps that we're gonna follow?
Sure.
And all the bidders knew that this is the process that, that the engineering department and council has established, and that's the way it is, I think that would help.
I have absolutely no issue with that, and we, we, we have some form of that, but it might need to be tightened up a bit, I have no issues with that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I mean, we can record anything, like I said, it's a public bid opening, there's not, when we're talking about things being said, and when you're talking about a bid opening, things that are said have zero to do with the bid opening. So, really, it's just, and there's always, there's always, our policy is there's always two department heads there, so that they can, so that they, they watch the process. Again, it's just verifying that the bids are sealed and received on time, and that they were received from the people that said that they gave them to us. Other than that, there's no discussion of the bids, there's no, "Oh, wait, your number's wrong," or "We need to talk about this." There, there's, there should never be any discussion of the bids whatsoever to bid opening.
I don't disagree, but I also don't see the harm in having that being...
Sure.
...publicly recorded. That's my opinion.
Okay, Ms. Cochran?
Thanks, Adam.
Ms. Cochran?
Regarding the surplus vehicles for the police department...
Can I get back before we get away from what Mr. Meisner brought up?
Wait.
That's why I pushed my button. I don't have a problem with establishing what you're talking about, but I agree with him, we should not, ahead of time, let them know what our estimate is. The purpose for not letting them know, if we let them know the estimate's $30,000, we probably won't save any money, because everybody's gonna say, "There's a $30,000 estimate, I can bid $29,900."
The issue, Mr. Haquez, isn't, I don't want the figure released prior, prior to the bid closure date. I, I'm confused, there seems to be some controversy as to whether the engineer estimate is released at the bid opening deadline, before the bids are opened, or after, and at that point, it's insignificant, because nobody can change their figures.
Okay, now, but what you just said now is okay, but you didn't say it earlier. You indicated that you wanted that estimate given ahead of time, and I don't think we need to give the estimate ahead of time.
Did you understand it like that?
Well, what I hear you saying is that, that you, you want us to open, or that you want us to disclose the estimate before the bids are open, at the bid opening.
No, after.
After the deadline, but before the bids are open.
Alright, I mean, if we got a dead bid...
Right, and that, and I would say that that's not proper, and if we, if you want us to bring you back some, some, some information on that, I'd be happy to do so, but I don't think that's, that's the right thing to do, and there's, and there's reasons for that.
So, can I interject here?
We have Amanda talking.
What if, what if it was... What's that?
Okay, let's finish this out. Go ahead.
What if it was, the bids were read, and then your engineer's estimate was read?
That's how we do it today.
It is?
Yes.
Most of the time.
If there's an engineer estimate, that's how we do it.
Most of the time.
So, give me an example of why there wouldn't be an engineer's estimate, isn't that the budget we follow?
No, sometimes we're given a budget on a project that, that the engineering department didn't develop, there's no engineering involved in it, say, say Constantine's demolition next door, the last demolition project we did was in 2010, I don't, I don't have any numbers or experience on that, so... So, I was given a budget. There's not an engineer's estimate for it. So, it's going to get opened. I'm going to bring it back to you guys. If the budget's there for it, you want to spend the money, then we're going to award it.
On this subject?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, Adam, the, why do you do an engineer estimate?
Well, so, I'll tell you why we do it, and I'll tell you why the contractors like it, like to have it. So, we do it typically for budgeting. So, you know, usually, sometimes, that's the other thing, and that's one of the reasons one of our jobs isn't being awarded tonight, is because oftentimes, our estimate is done way before it's even bid, and is part of the challenge sometimes in some of the CDOT grant projects that we do, is that you're chasing that scope and that inflation and the changes in the market and some things like that. The contractors like it in particular, because they like to see, they like to see how close their numbers may have been, and their bond companies like to see it, because it may show whether they did a good job in putting their bid together or not, and may have left too much on the table or not enough.
Thank you. I just want to officially clarify. My request was not to have an engineering estimate released prior to the bid opening deadline.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Absolutely. Okay.
I have some questions on this matter, too.
Could we just have Ms. Cochran finish what she was interrupted rudely about? Would you finish that, Ms. Cochran? And then I'll re-circle back, and we'll talk this over again. Ms. Cochran, talk.
The vehicles being surplus, do they go to an auction? Are they sold? Are they just donated?
Some of them will be scrapped. If they're in working condition, we'll auction them or sell them.
But if we can make money off of them, we will do that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was all I wanted to know.
Okay. Now, do we want to go back to the bid process, non-process, or whatever? All right. Ms. Smith?
Adam, why do the bids, why do you think they came in so much above your estimate cost?
On the project that we're not awarding tonight? Two things. One, so much time has passed between the time the grant was put together. It's been five years. And also, there's been some scope creep in it, because we were trying to take advantage of the federal grant dollars to build some stuff above and beyond maybe where we could have narrowed it down. We've talked to CDOT. We learned our lesson on that, and we actually bid the Lincoln School in a different way, and tried to rebid the Main Street project in the same way with multiple bid schedules to make it easier for us to award it. So, that's the reason. It seems like, there doesn't seem to be a lot of contractors right now that are available to do flat work. And so, locally here, we just aren't getting a lot of bids for that. I know the smaller flat work, concrete companies that we have here in town are three, four months out as far as doing work, and part of this work had to be, had to be done when the school's out. And so, I think that, those things all combined, just didn't work out.
So, why don't we bid it out? If we know they're contracted out three or four months, why don't we put the bids out more than, you know, five months ago or six months ago?
Well, because we had, so, we were trying to, the Safe Rasta School project at Lincoln and the safety project at the middle school, you may recall, we had to wait for CDOT concurrence to bid. And then we also had to combine it with our waterline project and our street reconstruction project. And all that had to happen during those summer months when school was out. So, some of that wasn't ready last summer. We had a delay, and then we had a delay on the middle school project, because we had some design issues, if you might recall. And then you combine that with waiting for concurrence from CDOT to actually go to add. We just got the one from Lincoln School three weeks ago, got permission to go to add. So, if we had everything, had everything ready in November last year, then we could have probably bid it out in April.
What project? It says that some things will be done with 2A money, will be done at those intersections.
So, the federal grant would have paid for, for example, the handicap ramps on the corner of 12th and Main and 13th and Main. Since we're not doing the grant project, we can't use the grant dollars for that, 2A, we're obligated to put in handicap ramps when we rebuild the street. So, 2A will have to pay for those ramps now.
Well, there'll be future opportunities. I guess it's still a really popular place for pedestrians to cross, and it's still dangerous. I mean, I have some
Well, you may recall, the main concern, the main concern there was speed. So, we were looking at a traffic calming scenario is what we were looking at. We're still working with our engineering contractor to reconfigure the parking. So, if there's room, we may still go to diagonal parking, which will then add to that same traffic calming effect that we were talking about with pulling the curbs out, if you have the cars parked in a different way where the bumpers are out further. So, the other thing is, too, the school has switched their, if you've seen the new school design, their front door is in a different place, their bus drop-off is a completely separate lane from 12th Street. So, they've done a lot of things in their project that has negated a lot of what we were designing into the project. So, that's why I feel comfortable, you know, as I wrote in my memo, the reasonings behind just kind of letting this one go. It was, it was a sticky one to begin with. We had issues with design and concerns with different things with the businesses in the area. That combined with the budget and the bidding and the interest by local contractors, as well as the changes to the school, we just think it's a good idea. Talked to CDOT, just let this one go and work on the next project.
Do we need to start getting bids out for other streets, considering that there's a number of contractors that are booked out?
Yeah. So, the good thing is, you know, the rest of our 2A streets are pretty close to being ready. We plan on starting the next round, have them started in early July. All the local contractors know that they're coming. They know what the schedule's going to be for them. And not just local, all the people that have been bidding on our projects to date, they know the schedule for our 2A, so they have those in their mind already. And then we are hoping, thankfully, because of the stormwater project that we planned for Ninth Street, we've already started survey and design on that, so hopefully, it will be ready long before the end of the year, so it'll be ready to do exactly what you're suggesting.
Okay.
Mr. Hammack?
Thank you. Adam, on the Lincoln School project, we had, we had five different schedules, is that right?
Right. We were preparing ourselves for the worst-case scenario, again, based on what happened on Main Street. So, we had a whole, we listed a whole, like a bare minimum of what we did with just crosswalks, and then, then our full project that we got the grant for. The prices came in right for that one, so we're going to build the whole project. So, really, the rest of the schedules didn't matter.
So, the reason for the five schedules is that we didn't have the grant money yet?
No, the reason for the bid schedules was, so our budget was $350,000. Let's say, the lowest bid schedule, the lowest amount of work came in at $350, and that's all we could afford to do, then we would award that bid schedule.
I see. I see. And that, and does that, so requesting five bid schedules like that, is basically the contractors are dealing off of unit purs?
Correct.
Right? And so, if you've got five on one and three on another, it's just a, just a simple multiplication type thing?
Yeah, and they're only going to get awarded one of those. And we've done, we've done that a lot before. You've seen us do that, like, on alternates. Like, if we bid this type of street reconstruction versus this, it's two different bid schedules, we only award one. So, that one just had different sizes of scope.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, that's, the good news in all this is that the Lincoln School project looks great as far as the bid. Same contractor got the low bid for the street. That means good things for the public and the school, because it's going to be easier coordination with one contractor in there completing all the work than, rather than trying to coordinate it.
Ms. Gonzalez?
That's not supposed to be pressed.
What?
My button.
Mr. Meisner?
To the Main Street project, so, lack of better terminology, the bump outs, is that in or out?
Out.
But then I heard you say, "Parallel parking and extended crosswalks"?
So, we're talking, right. So, we're looking at the width there, and if it's possible to go to a diagonal parking on that, on those blocks versus the parallel, we may do that, and it could have, it could have similar calming effects to the traffic.
But no, but no actual curb extensions?
Kind of like the 300 block, 200 block, 300 block of Main Street is now.
Do you anticipate both of those projects being completed by the start of school?
They're required to be done by, I think it's August 17th, both those projects.
Okay.
All right. We were still talking about, no, we, a motion and a second, we're in discussion.
Yes.
Any more discussion?
Ryan, he doesn't even have a button.
He don't have a button, do you?
Doesn't always work.
Okay.
I just wanted to remind you that Item 9 in the regular agenda would like to table that for next, until the next meeting.
Okay. Let's get a vote on this motion to approve the modified and much-talked-over consent agenda. So, we have a motion out there and a discussion. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you all. Do we need a motion, Ryan, to take 9 out, or just, just pull?
Just give it? I'll defer to our city clerk.
You could have done it together, since you didn't, and you have to.
Okay. Then I would seek a motion to pull Item Number 9, a consideration of transfer, essentially the bell tower, 9. I would ask for a motion on that, to take it off the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Did you have a?
I move that we take Item 9 off of the agenda.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Thank you. I want you all to roll, please.
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay. Item Number 10 is a consideration adoption by title only of Resolution 17, Series 2019, entitled, "A Resolution Accepting the Petition for Annexation and Establishing July 15, 2019, as a Date of Public Hearing on Requested Annexation of a Parcel of Unincorporated Territory Located in the County of Fremont, Known as New Creations Annexation." Would Patrick or Ryan?
We'll have Patrick come up and speak to this.
Patrick, would you address us on that?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This evening, before you, you have a resolution that will act on a petition for annexation that the city has received. This is under Colorado State Statute, a necessary step before we actually get to the public hearing to consider the annexation itself and the zoning component that comes in concurrently with the annexation. So, the effect of this resolution, if you adopt it, is to effectively say, "We, the city, accept this petition for annexation, and we are going to schedule the hearing, per state statute, between 45 and 60 days from now," which happens to fall, that July 15 date is a regular council meeting that happens to fall within that date range.
Thank you. Any questions? Patrick? Mr. Meisner?
I noticed in your opening paragraph, you mentioned that it's currently operated as a lodging establishment for overnight guests.
Well, we, I haven't fully investigated that. They're calling it the New Creations Inn, and it appears to, from the exterior, look a bit like a hotel. But as part of our review of the zoning request, we'll look into that a little bit more.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Smith?
Isn't the New Creations Inn kind of a home to help people who've been homeless, and they're getting back on their feet again? An opportunity for them to get the, they have a place to live while they're getting some skill, life skills, to have them be successful going into the regular?
It may be. Again, in, just in responding to the petition, I didn't know exactly what the use on the property was. That's part of the investigation of the zoning request, that will also be coming forward to you. I know that the owner of this property also owns the church that's immediately east of this property.
Ms. Turner?
I'm looking at the petition for annexation, and on Paragraph 1, it says that annexation is desirable and necessary. I was wondering if you could explain how this could be necessary?
Well, it's, you consider both of them together. It's not a separate either desirable or necessary. This one happens to be within a parcel or within an area that has been previously identified as a priority annexation area for the city, and therefore, those sort of rise to the top when it comes to consideration of petitions for annexation.
So, that, to me, sounds desirable, but I guess you're saying that?
Well, it isn't an either-or. It's a both, desirable and necessary. So, if either one of those fits, I would say that, yes, they're both applicable.
Okay. So, maybe you could help.
Let me help out on this. So, tonight, if you adopt the resolution, all it says is that the petition substantially complies with the Annexation Act. And so, the necessary and desirable language is taken from the Annexation Act. But at the public hearing on July 15, you can decide to annex or not annex for any reason whatsoever. So, tonight just sets it for a hearing based on the fact it essentially meets the criteria in the Annexation Act and the city's annexation policy. But annexation is one of the few things that the city council does where it can decide to do it or not do it for any reason or no reason at all. So, all you're doing tonight is setting it for the hearing.
So, even when we have the hearing, someone doesn't have to establish that it's necessary as
Correct.
...common understanding of that word?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ryan?
Just noticing in Exhibit C in the resolution, there is a typographical error under Number 2, says July 15, 2016. So, when this is put up for motion, it needs to be corrected to July 15, 2019.
Adam, do you have something?
I do. It'd be more pertinent when we have the hearing, but I just wanted to give you some background of this, so that you understand city policy. So, this applicant came to us for a change in their water service. So, again, they have to go through the water service contract agreement process, but if they're in an annexation area that's priority, we tell them that they have to at least file an application for annexation before we will even entertain or sell them the new water. So, and this house, or this place is a, it's, I don't know, I don't know if the right term is halfway house or whatever, but they, they take, they take in families, single moms, that sort of thing, and they set them up in these places as temporary housing, set them up with budget counseling and those sorts of things, give them a job on the site to do while they're there to earn money, and then, once they are good to go and ready to leave the nest, then they move them on and bring somebody else in. So, that's, that's what the project is there, and it's been there for at least a decade, so. But that's, that's why they're applying, is because, because we told them that they had to, because they're a priority area and they want a water change. But we can talk more about that at the hearing.
Mr. Meisner?
Maybe somebody on council can help me. During a homeless discussion, we had an organization of some religious affiliation that had people camping out, I thought, in their parking lot overnight. Does anybody recall that?
That wasn't that place.
Okay.
It's Mountain View. It's over on Great
All right.[1671.26] I just want to make sure we're not opening a can of worms.
Yeah. So this isn't necessarily a homeless project. It's more like, Adam said, helping those who are kind of going through rough times, helping them get back on their feet.
Kind of like Journey Home.
Well, this has been, but I said, this has been established for 10 years without controversy or problems.
That is not in any issue.
Ms. Smith?
I've actually known people who've gone to that.
And again, I, I would encourage the city council that this is just an eligibility discussion. And so the discussion about whether this is a good idea happens in July.
Mr. Hammerick?
And so I, just kind of for the record and to make sure I have it straight in my mind, too, the reason that they, that Adam gives the advice to people that, that when they're getting a new water cap, is the city has formally, as a matter of policy, adopted certain areas as priority annexation areas. And so when those areas come for some action by city staff, the, the applicant is advised that you're in a priority area, you have to submit an application for annexation. And then we go through the whole process. But this, tonight, is just saying, yes, we agree, we should hear this.
Right. You could, as Corey said, you could still decide that we don't want to annex you even though that's our policy. We've changed our mind and we don't.
And just to put my point on it again, this is important to me in other, in other discussions. Because it's city policy, this is the result that we have. The city is acting on its policy to give these areas a priority annexation.
Okay. Any more discussion? I'd ask for a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we adopt Resolution Number 17, Series, Series of 2019, with one change of the date to July 15, 2019.
Second?
Second. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? So that, that would, we don't have to go back three years. We're just going to do in the present time.
Back to the future.
Motion made in a second. Any discussion? Here we go. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Okay. Number 11 is in consideration at first reading by title only in ordinance 14, Series 2019, entitled, "In ordinance of the City of Canyon City Appropriating Additional Sums of Money for the City's 2019 Budget." Would you, or Tammy, would you like to discuss that with us?
Yes.
Basically, before you is the ordinance requesting a supplemental budget appropriation. The first item is for $33,930, which is grant funding that the police department received. And that will be used for equipment for the building on Ohio. The second item is the $80,000 for the Royal Gorge Park Trestle Bridge project. And that will be coming out of the unappropriated reserves.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Nordike? Mr. Hammerick?
Yeah. So the, 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 the Trestle Bridge project is for refurbishment of the trestle. Is that correct?
Yes. That will be, I think, the next item that you're actually discussing. It's number 12. It is for that.
So it's, so it's not actually constructing a new trestle, it's refurbishing one?
That's, that's correct. It's for, for the decking on the, the large trestle, the double, the double wide trestle decking and railing for that trestle.
I'm making this point because I had a question on this already. Is, you guys are building a new trestle?
No.
Mr. Meisner?
Does anybody recall how much we originally budgeted for this resurfacing of the trestles?
So I, I recall you at a, at a meeting saying that you would like to add an additional $80,000 on top.
Right. It was 68. And then we would have those two out there. They're going to climb on it anyway to make it safe and usable to get to Vista Point, to complete those. It's $80,000.
Yeah.
It would be, either be that, in my opinion, fix them or tear them down because the public is going to climb on them. Might as well make it safe.
It wa, it wasn't in a, a council meeting, but we were in a, either a vision committee. But you had made the statement.
I think it was a vision committee.
Your, your question in the amount, was that the right amount that was quoted?
Well, we went from a simple project to help a developer with some trestles and it's kind of like the Boulder project here.
But it's also helping our community with our trails, too.
Well, I, I still ask how many people that are going to use a trail up at the Royal Gorge region that are going to drive back to Canyon City and spend money. And I think you'd be hard-pressed to show me how many of those people from the Gorge area return to Canyon City and increase sales tax revenues. Because none of the expenditures in the Royal Gorge Park are increasing sales tax, city sales tax revenue.
But this isn't inside the Royal Gorge Park. This is...
It's in the county.
Well, I understand. But there's a whole gamut of, that's a huge discussion that we could get into.
Ms. Turner?
Well, in response to your concern, while we can't, I don't think we can prove one way or the other whether people are going to come into town. But I think it's very likely that they'll go to the park, the, and to see the bridge. And we are sharing in those profits because we own that. So I do think that we see, we will see that reinvestment come back to us, hopefully.
Good.
Ms. Smith?
I would just like to further add that we are creating a pretty incredible destination spot. And it's not just for tourists, it's for our own citizens especially as well of the historical value. Originally, we were going to do low budget and have people go some, over some trestles and under other trestles to make it more affordable. Mayor had strong feelings that going under trestles was not going to be sufficient for public safety. And so that's where we're at with that.
Okay. Let's move that conversation to the next item. But right now, we're, we are trying to get a motion in a second to advance the dollars for those two projects, the police and the trestle. And then we'll have the discussion about the viability of trestles. So would someone like to make a motion? I already made that. Any questions of Ms. Nordike? Then I would seek a motion in a second.
Ms., oh.
Ms. Cochran?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we approve ordinance 14, Series of 2019, on the first reading.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
I just had one really quick thing. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay.
Just one more point to make. This is one of the very few trails that we are creating that is ADA accessible for all people to be able to use and enjoy.
Okay. Now, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go on to number 12, Royal Gorge. Thank you, Ms. Nordike. Tammy, okay. Royal Gorge, number 12 is the Royal Gorge Park Trestle Bridge Project, the change order. Ryan, would you like to discuss that with us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So we're seeking formal approval to move forward with the proposal submitted by American Builders of Castle Rock for the funding of one additional trestle. We, as has previously been discussed, this was discussed at the April 1st regular city council meeting but wasn't formally approved. This additional trestle will deck 456 linear feet in length and will be constructed identically to the two trestles that we've previously done, or they're currently under construction.
Okay. Any questions from, Ryan? Now, we've had that discussion. In my opinion, when I went and looked at that, I walked that, I could absolutely see children and people attempting to get to Vista Point. And they're not going to walk under the trestle over the sheer cliff to get there. But they're going to want to get there. And I think it's a hazard. So I think you either decide you're going to take the trestle down completely or fix it. I think there's a huge advantage, and I think it will be a draw, to fix it. It is an amazing place to get to that we own. There's liability and there's, there's a, there's an attraction that I think people will come from other areas just to walk that. I would. And it's very walkable. And I think pretty much handicap accessible as well. That's my pitch.
And you're going to drive back into town and buy an ice cream cone, too?
Absolutely.
Okay. You convinced me.
Thank you.
It's cheaper than paying a ticket to get into the gorge to buy an ice cream.
I, I think it's, when, when you look at the whole, the whole package, it's part and parcel of that. The people that would come possibly to camp, they would come to walk other trails. They would maybe go out to oil well flats. That's going to be one of them. I can guarantee you on their itinerary, guess where they're staying, here. This will be the point that they work out from. And I, I can see that happening. They're going to go to Via Ferrara, they're going to go to the climbing wall or the oil well flats. And then they're going, the next day, they're going to go up there. That is an amazing, amazing trail.
That's a continuing hypothetical statement we've been making about our trail investments that has yet to be proved by incremental increases in sales tax revenues.
It will. Any other discussion? No, no, no. Do you have, number 13 is administrative report. Do you have it, I'm losing it here, all right?
But I'm sorry, did you call the roll for that?
Oh.
We need a motion still.
There's no, no, there's no motion to make. Does it, oh, it does, okay. I'd like to entertain a, a motion to fund that project.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the change order for the train trestle improvements.
Mayor, second?
Second.
Second. It is order number two.
Yeah.
Number two.
Number two. What are you talking about? Ms. Cochran, did you second that?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Cochran seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Mr. Admin, active administrator, do you have a report for us?
Yeah. Just want to update you on some numbers from the, the building department. In May, we issued four new home permits. Those were all reviewed in-house. On average, two-day turnaround on those plan reviews. We issued the building permit for the Holiday Inn Express. And we had two commercial permits for alterations to commercial properties. So I've got a lot of things going on in the building departments. Housing numbers seem to be up for, for the year. And I'm going to keep that progress moving forward.
And I think a lot of those people want to come here and walk out on their trestle.
I'm sure.
Any other questions or comments for the good of the...
Send me the rest of the trails.
Okay, then. We're adjourned.